Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting of Finance and Corporate Services Committee. Our public input to our 2018 budget. Looking very forward to hearing what everyone has to say with respect to the budget, whether it's something that's in there or something that you think should be in there. We've had a great deal of engagement to date, and we'll begin with Mr. Haggy.
Thank you, Chair Davy, members of council. I'd just like to go over some of the information that we've already received as far as feedback on the budget goes. There's plenty of ways for the public to stay informed about the budget, and some of the contact points are shown on screen here, whether it's through social media, email, phone, or a portion of the city's website dedicated specifically to the city's budget process. By far, the most popular way that we've received feedback was through the budget survey posted on Engage Kitchener. The number of visits we had this year to the survey was 383, which is more than double the number of visits we had last year. Total responses we got this year, 171, was more than the total number of visits we had to last year's survey. So there's certainly been a whole lot more input and engagement in this year's budget process than we've seen in the past. The survey itself was quite short, only six questions long. It invited people to vote for certain choices, as well as provide their written comments. All the feedback that was received was included in the issue paper BD-07, and a revised version of that was provided to council about a week ago, and all of the new content is highlighted in yellow in that issue paper. That issue paper's also been posted on the city's website, and I'll just go over what it says in summary format over the next few slides. The first question was about services the City of Kitchener provides. More than half of survey respondents said that the city delivers good value in some areas but could improve in others. And the areas most cited for this question deal snow plowing, the value for taxes, and traffic or road safety. The second question in the survey was about service levels and property tax increases. Over 60% of respondents said that they prefer maintaining service levels at tax rate increases around the rate of inflation. And this feedback is similar to what we've seen in other surveys we've done. The past two Environic surveys have yielded similar results, as well as another survey question that we asked during the 2013 budget process. There seems to be consistency around this within the community over a long period of time. For this question, the most often mentioned topics were concerns about affordability, the need to maintain service levels or replace infrastructure, and value for taxes paid. The third question was about the proposed tax rate increase of 1.7%. An overwhelming majority of nearly 83 respondents thought that this increase was either very reasonable or somewhat reasonable. For this question, the most often mentioned topics were concerns about affordability, the need to have small increases in order to maintain service levels, and around inflation. Fourth question related to the proposed utility rate increase of 6.5%. The respondents were fairly evenly split, thinking that the increase was either somewhat reasonable, somewhat unreasonable, or very unreasonable. For this question, the most often mentioned topics were concerns about affordability, the need for this important utility infrastructure, and desire for better planning of replacements or maintenance. The fifth and sixth questions were open-ended and simply asked respondents to provide their comments. Question five was if the city could invest in any one service, what should it be? A number of the responses that came through here and as well as in some of the other questions actually related to services provided by the region. So it appears that we, as a city, could do a better job distinguishing what we do versus what the region does. Of the comments that related to the city, the most common topics were roads and traffic, snow plowing, whether it's on the road or trails or sidewalks, and different forms of active transportations, trails, bike lanes, and sidewalks. The sixth and final question in the survey asked for respondents if there was anything else they wanted to tell us about the proposed budget. Again, one of the most popular responses we had related to a regional service, the LRT. But there were plenty of responses related to cities' own topics and dealt with things of affordability, efficiency, and better communication or transparency about how funds are spent. Mr. Chair, that ends the presentation about the input we've already received, and I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Haggy. Just a couple of quick items before we get into it. First, I wanted to note, you'll notice that Counselor Singh's absent. He has a very, very good excuse for being absent this evening. He just welcomed a new baby girl recently, and I understand he has been in touch with them earlier today, and they were just discharged today. So I'm sure he will follow up with all of the public input that's brought forward this evening. The next item I just want to get to really quickly before we get into the delegations is, as per past practice, we sort of have this structure set up to make sure that everyone gets to us in a timely manner in terms of the delegates, so you're not waiting too long for councillors to get through questions. In the past, we've had a sort of a format where we get to a certain threshold. We actually limit questions from councils to questions of clarification. Fortunately, we're not at that point this evening. Pardon me, we have eight registered delegations, so as per our past practice, that would permit members of this committee to ask questions for up to five minutes. That's not something that I want to direct. I'd actually look for a motion for a member of this committee to move that, Counselor Ainatus. Does anyone have any comments or concerns with this approach? Again, you would have five minutes to ask questions of any delegation. Sorry, I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Okay, that does cover it, so we'll get to our very first delegation, and that is Mr. Ian Klugman from Communitec. Reminder to everyone, you do have five minutes to make your presentation. I'll give you a warning when we get to that five-minute mark, but exactly we'll appreciate your succinctness. Mr. Klugman, you're ready.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for allowing me to appear this evening, Chair and members of council. It's great to be here. And I've got eight seconds until I'm done. That's not a good sign. I'll use my own timer. Sorry about that. Okay, here we go. So I wanted to take you through a bit of a feedback as to the partnership over the last year that we've had with the City of Kitchener. It's been so important. But I wanted to start by talking a bit about this partnership called Communitec. It was 20 years ago. In 1997, a group of people came together. It was municipal leaders, it was politicians, and it was entrepreneurs who said, "We've got big ideas about perhaps investing in some haircuts, but also in how do we build the kind of industry we want to build for the future." And when we think about what Communitec is now, people are often questioning, you know, okay, what is it? What is it you do? We are a movement. We came together with a big idea to say, "We want to build a world-class technology industry right here in Kitchener, Waterloo." We started with 43 people, and to date, we've got over 1,400 members of Communitec. A pretty simple mission, we're going to help tech and innovation-based businesses start, grow, and succeed. And there's three core things that we do. We are a place. So we are the center of gravity for technology, entrepreneurship, and innovation in Waterloo Region. We are a clubhouse for tech and innovators. We are programs that help tech companies, small, medium, and large, so everything from the early-stage companies all the way through to the largest companies in Canada. And we are partners in building a world-leading ecosystem, and that means the right policy framework, the right brand for this community, and the right kinds of talent capital and customers to help start and grow great companies. 2009, we came before this council. We had a big idea to establish something called the Communitec Hub. There was an investment of $500,000 from the Economic Development Fund, and that spurred hundreds of millions of dollars investment in this fund. We had some big goals back then. We said there would be 100 companies created, there'd be 10,000 jobs, $100 million in investment capital, and we'd help bring three big multinational third community. Of course, since then, about eight years later, we have vastly, significantly surpassed all of those objectives. And even within this last year, when we think about the kind of impact that we've had, we have become a major center for innovation globally with over 12,000 people coming to this community to visit the Communitec Hub. So really, when we look forward, what is it we plan to do? We have to continue, not only to continue to support tech companies and early-stage startups, we also help them, but need to help them grow and scale. We need to get behind the big opportunity around Internet of Things and data, and that speaks to things like the Catalyst Initiative on Glasgow and, of course, the Data Hub in uptown Waterloo. We need to do more to address the talent gap, because our companies are growing, which means they need to hire more people. We need to address the underrepresented groups such as women. And we need to continue to bring Waterloo Region to the world and bring the world to Waterloo Region. One of the big initiatives we're going to have over the next little while is launching the largest conference that we've seen, where over 2,000 people are going to come to be part of what's called True North. It's going to be held in downtown Kitchener with a True North Festival, and it's going to be held at Lot 42. Our plan is that we want to grow this to 5,000 people next year. We feel we've earned the right to host a global innovation discussion right here in this city. We had a partnership that started last year, actually, two years ago with you, and allowed us to expand significantly our space, to bring in more corporate partners, to launch new programs that focus on helping companies scale from a sales perspective and helping women-led founders through our Fierce Founders Program. New corporate labs that came into the space that was part of the partnership with the City of Kitchener was not only some great iconic corporate brands, but also the likes of the Royal Canadian Air Force, the Province of Ontario Digital Services Lab, and, of course, the opening of the Kitchener Innovation Lab at the Communitec Hub, which has really sent a strong signal about innovation and leadership in this space. More in the future, as I mentioned, around these key sort of advanced programs, IoT and talent. And I wanted to end by just bringing to focus this incredible article that came out around December 25th, 26th, and it really spoke to the impact that the economic development strategy and the collective effort of the people in this room and across this region has had in turning this downtown into something that was a challenge, into something that has become a destination. And I think that it's not the effort of any one individual or one group, it was the collective effort of saying, "We need a big, bold strategy to chart the kind of future that we want." So with that, I wanted to thank this council and the city for your partnership and support. It's been a great few years, it's been a great 20 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klugman, for your presentation. Any questions of Mr. Klugman? Counselor Marsh?
Sorry. Mine just went on as soon as I touched it.
Okay. Yeah, the microphones seem to be... Actually, I think you try speaking in it, and I can do that for now until they switch over.
I think maybe Counselor Fernandez was first, or...
Oh.
Doesn't really matter. Okay, all right.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Klugman, for your presentation, and you did great at sticking almost within five minutes. It's hard to fit all that in. I want to tell you that we hear so often how well the city's tech companies are doing, and that's in large part thanks to all the work that your organization has done over the years, so thank you. I wonder, though, we do have also, on the flip side, a lot of comments that say, "What about the arts? What about, how can we build on the success of all those tech companies and individuals who are being paid handsomely for their skill and their talent? And how can we help steer them towards reinvesting within the community specifically around the arts?" And I wonder if you have some ideas about that.
Sure. That's a really good question. And I think that there, you know, I think the biggest challenge that we face, I think we should pat ourselves on the back for how far we've come in reinventing this community, but there's, the real threat for us is complacency and apathy, and a sense that we're where we need to be. We're a long way from where we need to be. And from our perspective, you know, one of the big priorities is that we are constantly in competition for top talent. Top talent can go anywhere they want in the world. Top talent will dictate which cities and communities are going to be successful in the future and which won't. And I say all that because really what people are looking for when they make those decisions are, is it a great place to work? First of all, are there great jobs and great companies? And is there diversity in the kinds of companies? And can my spouse find a job? And the second thing they turn to is, is this a cool place where I want to live? Is this a place that's going to have interesting things to do and interesting people? And so our approach to this and our commitment to this is that we need to make sure that we're working on not, on all the non-tech-related elements of building a great community, because it is being a great community that will either attract people or not attract people. As an organization ourselves, we have invested significantly in local artists, both art within the Communitec umbrella, but also in platform and a location for art. We continue to work with community organizations to support them. We were major investors in, for example, not an arts-related organization, but Habitat for Humanity. We host artists, we are encouraging founders and entrepreneurs to connect and support and invest in local artists. We view this as being a key piece in building the kind of community that we want. There's more at work right now. I think there's an increased focus on community and a sense of accountability to community that we have not seen in a while. I think that the people who are founders right now and CEOs and leaders of companies in town feel a sense of obligation, which is very exciting. And I think that we are going to see, certainly from our perspective, further investment and certainly looking to see more investment from the organizations.
Okay, well, that sounds great. And so as those initiatives develop and materialize, it'd be great to hear from you about what they look like. And, you know, of course, we have seen some examples, but I just want to encourage you to keep us in the loop so we can help, you know, spread the word about what's happening.
Absolutely. We have a community relations manager, and I'll make sure that she reaches out and supplies updates on what we're doing in relation to the arts on an ongoing basis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just get a show of hands for people now that would like to have any questions? I have Counselor Fernandez next. Anyone else on this side? I'll see if anyone's on this side. Mayor Benavich? Okay. Oh, there we go. I think we're back in shape here. Counselor Fernandez.
Yes. Thanks, Ian, for your interesting presentation. You mentioned that the City of Kitchener had invested in Communitec. Can you tell us how much, can you tell the public in general how much that has been? And for how long? And how long do you anticipate funding investment from the city coming into Communitec?
Well, the initial investment, I would say the investment that was most significant was the initial $500,000 from Edif in 2000, I think, 2008, 2009. That was really the first investment, and it also sent a strong message about the importance of this initiative to this community. And it lent a significant amount of legitimacy to what we were doing. We then ran out and raised subsequently over $100 million from other sources of funding. On an ongoing basis, the funding that's been provided to Communitec has been in the form of investments in specific activities. So the last amount of money that was invested in Communitec helped us refurbish the innovation wing in our facility. And it was critical to us being able to undertake that, which has allowed us to bring in, I think, eight additional corporate innovation partners. And we would hope that the relationship would continue with the City of Kitchener over time. We would hope that we earn the right ROI to continue the partnership.
And I don't, you know, it's interesting that you say that you want to continue the partnership, and certainly the partnership is important, but is the funding from the city critical to the ongoing work that Communitec is doing? Or is Communitec now self-sustaining on its own?
Yeah, the thing about an organization like ours, where we deal in areas where there are market failures, is that there certainly is private money that we can bring in, but the public money is the most important, because it is the platform on which we are able to build our organization. The public money is the, pays for the activities that entrepreneurs, founders, the community can't afford. And so the public money is critical. It is actually the foundation on which we build the entire organization. I think it's also important that, you know, we have, I think it's also important that the message that it sends to all of our funders, all of our investors, provincial, federal, that the city believes in this initiative as well and is contributing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Benavich?
Ian, thank you very much for coming in and for the great work that the Communitec has been doing and continues to be doing. And I think as that article has shown, and I think its experience has shown, it's demonstrated how a small investment from the municipality is leveraged, you know, tens if not hundreds of times over in terms of new investment in the community and jobs being created. I guess my question to you, and you have an opportunity to see what's happening in other cities and ecosystems across Canada and, quite frankly, you know, North America and the world. My sense is that, you know, the pace of our competition is picking up significantly, that, you know, while we're doing well, we can't rest on our laurels, that, quite frankly, you know, complacency will potentially be our demise. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about that and what your sense is of what's happening elsewhere and how important it is for us to stay competitive in the future.
Well, it's a really, it's a very accurate assessment that complacency is probably our greatest threat. And I think in this community, we have understood, you know, David Johnson was in town today, and he reminded us of barn building. And we truly are a community that's been able to rally around big initiatives and engineer our own destiny. But we're also a community that has long understood the notions of things such as clusters and ecosystems, and we've been executing those strategies for a number of years. Now, the rest of the country, which has been spending a lot of time in Kitchener, is catching on to all of those strategies and how successful they are, and they're also pursuing similar strategies. And I would say that the rest of the world is also turning their attention to these things. And certainly, there are some countries that are further ahead, if you look at places like Germany, for example. But certainly, there is increased competition for the same type of approach. The other area where there's significant competition is in the area of talent. That's probably the most important area. We used to be able to retain more of the talent because there were not the options that there are now. Literally, now, we know there are a large number of students in town. We also know that there's a large number of companies in town every day trying to recruit or recruiting great talent to go work in their communities, others across Canada or around the world. So I think that we need to, we need to be impatient, and we need to continue to push hard on the opportunities that we've got. We're a long way from having made it. We've got some good signposts along the way that what we're doing is working, but it's still fragile, and there's a massive amount of disruption and change that's happening that creates opportunities for other communities.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay, and just one more, actually. Counselor Ainatus.
Thanks, Ian, and then thanks for your presentation. It's always great to listen to those numbers and take a lot of pride in those numbers. I guess my one question would be, what would be the biggest challenge for Communitec?
Well, I think the biggest challenge for us is largely around, I mean, we're blessed with having so many growth firms in our community, but they all are trying to hire between 10 and 100 people. And so our biggest challenge is talent. Our biggest challenge is transportation. Being able to tap into all of the Toronto-Waarlo corridor for talent is our big opportunity. And that's the one thing that is most concerning, is that we don't want to become a great place to start a company and not a great place to grow a company. And that's a real threat unless we can figure out how to, you know, increase the size of our academic institutions, increase the retention levels, but most importantly, being able to access efficiently other markets like the Toronto corridor.
Okay, thank you.
There are no further questions, Mr. Klugman. Thank you kindly for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Our second delegate is Mr. Haldritz. Good evening.
Well, it's been a tough three and a half weeks of our present winter season. With the record cold temperatures, I know public works was challenged with water pipe breaks and the constant daily snowfalls right around Christmas. I must say, it looks like a positive change has taken place within the snow plowing area. I have not seen snowpalls come on our crescent unnecessarily. Around Christmas, they came once in the morning, plowed, salted, and the crescent was in excellent shape. I also want to mention, it appears the City of Kitchener had the lowest property taxes of any council in this region during this election cycle. I wish water and sewer rates increases would not be as high, but I understand what has taken place there, and it is good that the water pipe breaks did not increase too much in 2017 over 2016. It is great news to see those breakages have been reduced during 2016-17 by approximately 50% compared to 2014, 2015. I'm also glad to see the City of Kitchener take a different approach on this issue as opposed to the aggressive approach in the last few years. It was great to read the Water Records article, December 30th, Downtown's $1.2 billion destiny, which is the same article that Ian alluded to. There's no question the face of downtown Kitchener has changed significantly in the last 10 years and will continue to change. However, this dubs beg the question, "When will the incentive programs for downtown development come to an end?" I suggest these programs are no longer necessary. Development will continue, and these incentives are just money towards these companies' profits. There is no need for taxpayers to subsidize these developers. The city needs to focus on must-have programs, not wish lists that are appealing perhaps publicly but do not address critical citizen needs. Their priorities must be examined. I suggest the following three items be reexamined. The Queen's Street between Duke and Charles. Although not immediate, another parking garage in the 10th year of the capital budget? Really? I thought there was going to be an explanatory coordination between GR buses, LRT, and intercity Go Transit. I suggest the Rockway Senior Center should be moved forward from 2023 to within the next three years of the 2018 capital budget. I understand many developers are interested in a private-public partnership to fulfill the anticipated needs of the retiring boomers. With the demographics starting in 1946 and peaking around 1960, by 2021, it will have been 75 years since the start of this group of people and 60 years since this peaked. There is a need in which the priority needs to be better evaluated. I trust council and administration is applying to whatever infrastructure program qualifies the City of Kitchener to receive funding. I would really appreciate a copy of this list and the status of where each application is in the pipeline. By the way, Mr. Chairman, I asked for this by the region. You can see the notes, and I was, and they sent that to me the next day. Last but not least, I want to congratulate your new CAO, Dan Chapman, on his success to his appointment, to this appointment. Despite having some differences of opinion on some subjects, while agreeing on others, I've always found our discussions led to more food for thought. With your experience, educational background, and your DNA, I know you will be a great CAO. I will be glad to answer any questions. Thank you for your time. Not bad, 44 seconds to go.
Thank you kindly for your presentation, Mr. Haldritz. At present, I have one person, Counselor Ellington.
Mr. Haldritz, are you aware that the downtown incentives are coming to an end? Do you know when they come to an end? Surely, you're aware of that.
No, I'm not.
I believe it's February of 1919.
2019.
2019, I'm sorry, 2019, showing my age. And that story, the Terry Panda story on the $1.2 billion, part of that has to do with developers scrambling to get in under the wire on those... developers scrambling to get in under the wire on those incentives. But I would have thought you would have known that those are coming to an end.
Well, I don't know as much as councillors do. I mean, I'm not given the information. But a part of the reason for saying that, and thank you for bringing that to my attention, councillor, but part of the reason I'm saying that is there's always a group of people that that want to bring new incentives forward at the time when something, when a program like this does come to an end. And I'm one person that represents several that suggests that a renewal of those incentives at this time, because I think it's just going to come naturally. I mean, I mean, that's one of the reasons why the, what the region said is going to be a benefit to the LRT, and of course, city of Kitchener is with that, too. It's just going to come naturally. So why, why tax the, tax, ordinary taxpayer on that?
Well, I disagree on that. I don't believe you'll see an extension of those incentives. I may be wrong, but anyway. On your page two of your presentation, you mentioned Rockway. I'm not opposed to speeding up the development of Rockway, but you mentioned you know of several, or you know of developers who would be willing to participate in a private-public partnership, which is what we're waiting for. Would you be able to tell staff or tell us tonight which developers?
What you say I said, I didn't say I know of. I said, I understand that, okay? And my understanding is from several discussions that I've had.
With developers?
And, and, no, I would not, I would not give names of companies in a public setting.
Well, it would help us considerably if we knew of those developers, but thanks anyway.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Fernandez.
Thank you, Harold, for your, your presentation. You talk about Queen Street between Duke and Charles, but that's all you say. So I would appreciate a bit more clarification around what you're talking about here.
There was an article in the paper sometime in the fall where there was significant money is going to be spent between Duke and Charles on Queen. And there's, there's probably some merit and some things that need to be done on Queen. But I'm not sure, what's in the back of my mind is, I'm not sure that we needed to spend as much money as what the original proposal was.
Okay. So you're speaking about the development on the corner of Queen and King and then some placemaking, I think it was.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate. I was pulling a blank on that. Thank you. Do you see that that money should be used in another area?
Well, yeah, I mean, for the last several years and still continuing, you know, I mean, infrastructure is, is a concern and it's something that's needed. So focus on needs, not on nice to have, not, not on facelifting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you kindly for your presentation, Mr. Jewitts. Third, oh, pardon me, Mayor Benovic.
Oh, thank you. Just further to that, on that Queen Street project, Mr. Jewitts, the staff's presentation outlined the costs associated with the work that needs to be done from an infrastructure replacement point of view. And there was, then there was some additional dollars that were necessary or that are being recommended from a, from, from, from a placemaking point of view, which speaks to, I think, the kind of point that Mr. Klugman was making earlier around the importance of creating places where people want to be and companies want to be and people want to live, work and play. And so I guess my question to you is, you know, do you, do you concur, for example, with his argument that there is some importance and value to that? And in terms of this particular investment, if some of the downtown partners, like the BIA and others, were to invest in some of the costs associated with that, would that change your, your view on this issue?
Most, most likely. The infrastructure necessary on Queen, by all means, that's needed. I think we should take a rest for a while, postpone, press the pause button and wait for a couple of years first to see what the impact is on the movements of peoples and vehicles. When the LRT goes on a scheduled basis and along with the, the filling of some of the buildings that have been built here in the downtown area, there's probably going to be some changes in movements of people and so on. So let's see what that is first before we do a facelift on some things.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further questions. I just wanted to point out that the, the updated, you mentioned the original funding request for the Queen Street placemaking. And when, at that time, I don't remember, recall exactly when it was, but it was much earlier in 2017, the additional request that we had unfunded at that time was $460,000 in additional. The recommendation in the budget, staff's recommending securing $300,000 of that from the private sector. So that would reduce the city's portion to $160,000. So I'm not sure if you had any additional comment based on that, but I just thought I'd provide it to you, Mr. Jewitts, while you're here.
Okay. I'll, I'll take that into consideration and I might send an email.
Very good. Thank you for, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, from, from the museum, we have Mr. David Marschall.
Good evening and thank you, everybody. I hope everybody had a good holiday and back here for winter. I'm really just here to say thank you for your support over the years and just give you a quick review of what's happened in 2017 and where we're going in 2018. It was a wonderful year, a real year of celebration during Canada's sesquicentennial. The unfolding of the flag for the Canada Games was really an exciting day, a very cold winter day, as you recall, a cause for celebration, our, our look at the indigenous community over the last 150 years. We also received some accolades, some awards, and launched our Museum After Dark program for young adults, which was great. And we also worked on the top left corner with the University of Waterloo's Institute for Quantum Computing, and together we created something that launched in Kitchener and toured Canada as part of the signature, a signature project of the federal government. It's currently in, in Ottawa on its last stop. It was also a pretty interesting year for milestones. The museum will be concluding its 15th anniversary, or 15th year, 14th year. We, we hosted our millionth visitor. We had a pretty unique donation of $1 million, and we received some, some interesting awards, the first from the president of the University of Waterloo. We are pleased to accept the inaugural award for the community impact of what we do. So it was, it was a great year. This council began over 15 years ago, probably 20 years ago. An amazing vision to help spark life into downtown Kitchener. School of Pharmacy was part of that project. And it was an amazing vision and we reclaimed, or you reclaimed this, the council today reclaimed the, what was Gauvey's Department Store, had been boarded up for 12 years and, and opened up the children's museum. As we go into our next 15 years, we have some very exciting programs we're working on. Interaction is an extremely important show. We have over, we have about 19 digital media artists, new media artists coming to, to the community. It opens up later this month. We will have installations with, at Communitech, at CG. Part of our board strategy is to take the museum out of the museum, so it's really great to be working with those, those great organizations. We also will be celebrating our great party as we have every winter, Electric Circus. We will be hosting a conference for emerging young professionals in the, in the arts and culture community. And we will be announcing soon, you can see in the body right there, an empty stool to help celebrate our 15th anniversary. We've got a pretty cool person coming to the community that will make a lot of us laugh. So with a tangible vision for the future, we have been working very, very hard to get to sustainability and to flourish and grow, and we're committed to doing that. And while I might not be at the desk I'm at now, I hope in 15 years that we look back and know that we did it together and we've done something really wonderful for this community. So listening to Ian talk, it's kind of, we're kind of where they were a little while ago. And there's a, the university began 60 years ago and perimeter and CG and the environmental piece at Rare Charitable were all developed, but there is that missing critical mass of arts and culture. And we don't even have an arts council right now. So we, as an organization, are looking to do some big things this year, and I just wanted to thank you. And as you go through the budget, I hope that there might be something there to give us a small increase and wrap us up to what others receive. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Marschall, for your presentation and the thanks as well. You touched upon it in a very modest way, but I think it's, it was a great donation that came via your family to the museum and a great investment in our community. So thank you for that. I don't see anyone in the queue in terms of questions, just Mayor Benovic.
David, thank you for coming in, and I'll echo Chair Davies' comments. As I said to you privately previously, a sincere thank you for your family's donation and, and commitment to, to the museum. Wanted me to just talk a little bit about just the overall number of people that, that the museum brings downtown and, and, you know, what that, what that's doing in terms of creating a vibrant place with, with different kinds of activities that, that sort of speak to creating that kind of cool environment that Ian talked about earlier?
Yeah. And I think that the original vision to open the children's museum was to bring families and strollers and so on. And we're, we're almost at the 100,000 mark annually for visitors of our paid portion of those visitors. Forty-two percent are from outside of the region, so we're bringing people to the community. I don't know if they are tech workers. They could be as people come to the community to work. Ian's touched on it. I've heard so many tech companies touch on the need for skilled workers, skilled labor, and we're the missing piece. I don't mean the museum, arts and culture and sustaining that and having a vibrant flourishing arts and culture is very, very important and to bring those people downtown and to bring those workers to the community.
You, you talked about the, the Museum After Dark program you launched. Is there more that you think can, can be done between yourselves and some of the other, I'm thinking, you know, museum organizations throughout the region to create, and I think, for example, and I know in Berlin, I think, I don't know if they do this year round or just part of the year, but they take the first Saturday night and they stay open all night and they sort of create this cool place for young people to go and, and hang out and, you know, have, and they have food and beverage opportunities available and, and so on. Is there more that can happen in the region in that regard?
Absolutely. And it's something that, that we want to do more of. We're a little bit handcuffed to, I mean, the funding model right now and not being sustainable bumps into meeting our mission and so on. And because we need to make up revenue through rentals and weddings and evening things, it's tough to have consistent evenings. We do have Wednesday evenings, which are $5 and to make it accessible. And this winter, we're launching the Thursday night Museum After Dark or MAD evenings for, for young adults and so on, 19 plus. It's something that we're responding to the community, but we're, we're also kind of bursting at the seams in terms of capacity to do as much as we'd like to do. Saturdays, we love to do Saturday evenings, but we're booked pretty much every Saturday evening, or I would suggest 80% of, of weekend nights for some type of event.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marschall, for your presentation. Appreciate it. Next up, from the downtown Kitchener Business Improvement Area, Linda Yetsey.
As the Executive Director of the Downtown BIA, I speak on behalf of the Board of Directors confirming the BIA's commitment to the enhancement of Queen Street. I will confirm our commitment tonight, explain why this project is good for the community, the businesses downtown, and how it aligns with our strategic priorities. Following this, I'd be happy to take your questions. So, sorry. Thank you. The Kitchener BIA is pleased to announce that our commitment to the Queen Street project will be $300,000 over three years, starting in 2018. By collaborating with the city of Kitchener, the BIA is able to be part of an important beautification project that will benefit our members and the whole community. The enhancement of Queen Street will serve to create a new downtown district that will connect people to laneways, attract new business by building a space that is appealing, and provide a more appealing walk from Charles to Duke Street, where today there is unutilized space. This new space has the potential to become a destination. This aligns directly with one of our priorities to attract new business to the downtown. Further, the development of the current space called Vogelsang Green will allow for an outside performance and gathering space. This space, once developed, will create even more opportunities for the whole community. Here are just a few examples of the comments that emerged from our public consultation that took place in the fall of 2017, where we partnered with Economic Development, City of Kitchener. The first one, people want to hang out in downtown Kitchener after 5:00 PM with a focus on social gatherings as more of our daily lives are consumed through devices. European cities are vibrant with pedestrian walkways, cafes, merchant shops, live music, trees and flowers. This concept should be the Kitchener model. Another one, laneways are hidden gems. I think the idea of using laneways for seating areas, patios and festivals would greatly increase the effectiveness of space downtown. The Queen Street project will also align with our new community event sponsorship program that provides up to $10,000 in funding to placemakers that create a great event downtown. This grant will allow for festivals like Night Shift, Cultrun, Summer Lights, and many more new placemakers and artists to activate programming in a new space once the park setting is completed. I believe that alone, no designer or architect or artist can create a great public space, but by collaborating and listening, we can create a place together that involves the community input. Keeping the community in mind will result in a space where people want to gather. In summary, I confirm the BIA's commitment to work together for the best possible outcome on the Queen Street project. And now I'm pleased to address any questions you may have at this time, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your presentation. We do have questions. Councillor Yuduski.
Thanks for coming in, Linda, and making your presentation on the Queen Street project, proposed, proposal, that is. You heard the previous delegation talk about this being a, an item for reconsideration as a wish list. What would your thoughts be as to what you would consider this item being a wish list or a must-have?
Through the chair, to answer your question, I really believe that it's a must-have. We have an underutilized We have an underutilized space on Queen Street right now, and the Vogelsang Green isn't really being utilized the way it should be. It's a space, it's a green space, but it needs to be redeveloped so that people feel comfortable gathering there. We also heard from, we had a question earlier tonight from Sarah Marsh to Ian Klugman, "We do need to create space for gathering, we need to create a place for artists and a place for music." We heard comments through our consultation process that people want to be downtown, and this is for the whole community, not just downtown, this is for all of the areas in Kitchener. People want to come down here and enjoy festivals and enjoy music, and they want to feel comfortable. I believe it's an absolute must-have.
Thank you, Counselor Etherington.
Yeah, Linda, the BIA, and I sit on the BIA, doesn't seem like a bunch of dewy-eyed people wandering around making wishes. Can you tell me what makes the Queen project so appealing? $300,000 is not a little money. There must be something at the heart of this that attracts the interest of the BIA. Could you explain that to me?
Thank you. Through the chair, to answer Mr. Etherington's question, yes, the BIA Board of Directors spent a significant amount of time discussing this. I think what's so important to know is that we went through a lengthy process to develop new strategic priorities to take us to 2020. And in that process, we did a large consultation throughout the community, and what we came to understand is that music, festival, arts, and business attraction were very, very important to not only the businesses downtown, but the whole community, and I think that's what drove our decision to stand behind the Queen Street project and to provide a significant amount of funds over three years. And I want to say that this contribution of $300,000 does not stop there. We will constantly be investing in live music. For example, our live music promotion has gone from $15,000 a year to $50,000 a year because we truly believe that having live music after 5:00 and activating our streets make it much more compelling to come downtown. So it goes far beyond this project. It gives us an opportunity. I even see opportunities, we want so much to have people stay after the Kitchener market. Wouldn't it be great to have children's storytimes in the park on Saturday afternoon with children's music? This project presents so many new opportunities for us to build on. It's just a template to build on.
Thank you very much. And would you agree that this fits into that puzzle we've already heard about, to improve a downtown to the point where it is more attractive to bring in the kind of talent that we want to draw? Is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, I believe that's very correct. I believe this goes right back to what Ian Klugman was saying as well, that attracting new talent to this community means that those people coming in that are young, that might have families in the future, that want to make Kitchener their home, that would be living in or around or near the downtown, are looking for safe places and activities and music and a place to gather and be social.
And including the arts talent at, yeah?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks, Linda. So, the $300,000 that the BIA is willing to contribute to this project, you're saying it's over a three-year time period. When I'm looking at the issue paper that we have, I'm wondering if that is going to be enough to move this project forward? And I mean, this might be a question more for staff, but when I look at what we had committed to, it's still saying that we need $300,000 sort of to fund the project as a shortfall. If it's only $100,000 a year, are you thinking that the city will upfront the difference until you are able, the BIA is able to add that $100,000 each year? I'm not, I'm just not quite understanding when I look at the issue paper and how it's laid out. Can you answer that, or is that more of a staff question?
Through the chair, both. Part of that is absolutely a staff answer. I'm not privy to that, and I'm not privy to exactly how the funding of the project is working. My understanding is the project does not take place or start until 2019, if that's correct. Our commitment is to give the city $150,000 in 2018. We were able during our consultation process and during construction to save some dollars and put some money aside that we wanted to give towards a larger project for downtown. So in 2018, it is our intent to give the city $150,000. In 2019, $75,000, and in 2020, we'd be giving $75,000 again.
Thank you.
So, the other part is absolutely a staff answer, I believe. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the clarification, because that helps me understand from what I've been reading, how that's going to be done. And I saw that Ryan raised his hand. I don't know if you would like to entertain his answer.
Certainly.
Thank you, Linda.
Sure. So through the chair, when we were putting together the issue paper and the projected budget, we did not have a commitment from anyone in particular. We were just saying that we needed $300,000 from the private sector. We have that secured now, so the cash flow may be different than is shown in the budget, but we have that commitment for the full amount.
Okay, thanks very much.
And Mr. Blum, do you want to add?
Through the chair, just a very quick clarification. So I think there'll be two aspects to this project. There'll be the tender and most of the hard surface work. Because of cash flow issues, there are items that won't be included in the initial tender, but will be purchased afterwards, things like benches, bike racks that can be purchased after the fact. So, I would just make sure you don't confuse the overall cost of the project with what will be tendered in 2019.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. And finally, we have Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Chair Davy. Thank you, Linda, for the presentation. I wonder if you also want to highlight any of the other placemaking initiatives that the BIA will be embarking on, such as the street, yeah, go ahead. I don't want to steal your thunder. But, and also, one of the main priorities, if you could highlight one of the main three priorities that our consultations resulted in, that will help justify the spending on the Queen Street project.
Through the chair, thank you, Sarah, for your question. In first part, to the first part of your question, you asked about some of the other things that we were investing in. The 2018 budget will be presented in future to council, the entire budget will be presented to council. I will be present on that night for questions. I think what Sarah's alluding to is, and being part of our board, I feel like the 2018 budget that we've created is probably one of the best budgets in terms of collaboration with the city. And beyond the Queen Street project, we are looking at another $100,000 in beautification, which will include some street murals. We're investigating that right now, so I can't give you all the details of it. We're looking into the costs of doing some beautification downtown. And another very important factor is we're allotting funds to a business startup program, and I'm working with the Business Center downtown of City of Kitchener. And the other part would be cleaning up downtown, where we've allocated $115,000 to enhance our waste management program. So there's a lot of things underway that align with our priorities for where we want to spend our funding. So there's a huge commitment in the next three years to work with you and to make downtown better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions, Ms. Yetsey. Thank you kindly for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have from the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee, Ms. Sharon Giles.
So, ladies and gentlemen, Chair Mayor, all the councilors, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Sharon Giles, and I am the current co-chair of the Grand River Accessibility Committee, commonly known as GRAC, at least until next Thursday when the elections are. So, GRAC performed a position paper on sidewalk snow removal about a year ago, and I believe it was circulated to you, but I do have copies with me tonight if you'd like any. I would like to share a few of those things from you, some key points. We cannot stress enough the importance of consistency when you leave your home. Your next door neighbor may have shoveled just fine, and your neighbor's three doors down may have also done a good job, but the two homes in between have not done their duty. Therefore, you are not able to safely get where you want to go. Many of our citizens opt to stay inside during the winter months, because it's just too risky to go out. And the road clearing department needs to be part of this solution as well. If our plows build high snowbanks at the intersection, crossing the road becomes difficult for all. A person using a wheelchair, someone with visual challenges, or a senior have no hope of getting through a snowbank. Let's make sure that all our citizens can enjoy our winter months and not moving dangerously on the roads because of poor snow clearing. Now, I know that you are waiting the new maintenance centers to come down from the province, and I know that you've heard supporters for city's snow clearance for a long time, but I think this is too important an issue that I shouldn't bring to your attention every single occasion. The movement for the city to take over sidewalk snow clearance is growing. The Tri-City Transportation Action Group, our local advocacy group, recently published the results of a study on their website. The City of Kitchener presently manages sidewalk maintenance in winter by requiring adjacent property owners to clear municipal sidewalks of ice and snow. They discovered that in all cases, the probability of being obstructed along a very short walk of 50 meters was 50%. The probability of being obstructed along a great distance was 80%. They chose 100 meter, 160 meter walk, which is the average distance to transit. The other item, the other person that was getting a lot of feedback about this issue is Catherine Fife. She has tweeted, and I'll tell you, so I get my page turn, there we go. She's tweeted that something that is not hashtag KW Awesome is how inaccessible our sidewalks are in winter conditions. My office continues to hear from folks who are trapped inside, unable to leave their houses. We need to have a meaningful, meaningful community discussion about accessibility. This decision presently is complaint-driven. You're relying on the homeowner who is willing to run out there anywhere, and I don't think that's fair. Or maybe you are the one doing the walking, and you're just struggling too hard to see what the address is of the home you want to complain about. Let's talk about some other comments that appeared on Catherine's tweet site. I don't think people should have to rely on the goodwill of strangers to get around this city safely and excessively. There isn't much dignity or dependability in that, my thoughts from last winter. Or this, coming from Ottawa, it is insane to me how little KW cares how even roads and sidewalks are accessible during the winter. And, my mom is disabled, and although she can walk, it is difficult. So in this time of snow, she is not able to navigate these sidewalks, making it a major accessibility issue, as you mentioned. I can't imagine the frustration of people who cannot walk. I think it's inexcusable. My own experience with snowy sidewalks have been frustrating and difficult as best, getting stuck in a poorly shoveled sidewalk, waiting for help in bitter snow, cold weather, or not being able to get down the street and watching my bus go by because I wasn't able to make it to the bus in time. So, I am active in the community, but unless I can arrange doors for transit, I hesitate to go out in the winter months. It's just too risky. I honestly don't think that the good citizens of Kitchener would object to a small tax increase of about $26. That is less than it would be to hire a kid to do your shopping for the winter. Our city works hard on a pedestrian charger. I don't recall any footnote that says it's only for fair weather. So please, add your voices to this issue. We need to really make a difference the way this is, and put in your budget. Let's be clear that where no one is left behind.
Thank you kindly for your presentation. I have quite a few questions for you. There are five in the queue at the moment, starting with Counselor Galway Seelock.
Hi, Sharon, thanks for coming in and continuing your advocacy. How long, because you've been with Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee for a while, on and off, and to your knowledge, how long have they been advocating for this snow sidewalk, sidewalk snow removal?
Well, we've been at it for the whole time, we've been on this time, and for at least half of the time was on before that. So I would say eight to nine years.
And when it comes to priorities for GRAC, would you say that this is one of the top priorities to try and accomplish?
This is definitely one of the top priority positions, yes.
Okay. And what would be a reasonable timeline if we were to move in this direction that we would endeavor to clear all sidewalks? So, you know, for our roads, it's 24 hours. For sidewalks, what would, is that something that GRAC has discussed, a reasonable timeline?
No, we haven't really discussed that. I think probably the city would be better discussing what that problem, you know, what that timeline should be.
Yeah.
I find one of the frustrating parts about the existing method is that the citizens have 24 hours to clear their walk. Well, if it snows for three days, there isn't really a cease to that snowfall, so it just gets worse and worse.
Right, right. And for this being one of the first years, I've actually had to walk my kids to a bus stop with a stroller. It's much different than, you know, wheelchairs, but I've learned some of the challenges firsthand. I've had to go on roads and different things, because especially windrows aren't, or the curb cuts aren't plowed and different things like that. So I have firsthand knowledge this year of many of the things that strollers, wheelchairs, persons with disabilities go through. So, I think, I know that we're looking at it, but I think it might be something that we could ask for an issue paper on, if I may do so at the appropriate time. Mr. Chair.
You may. Certainly. Next, we have, sorry, you're, very good, Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you, Sharon, for your presentation. It certainly is not falling on deaf ears, your concerns and your, you know, your perspective. I wonder what would be, in your opinion, an acceptable timeframe after which point the, or sorry, until which the snow could remain on the sidewalk? So, I'm concerned about how, if we did switch to having the city do all the sidewalks, that we wouldn't be able to get to all the sidewalks within a reasonable time? And I'm just wondering, what would a reasonable time be?
I think if the effort was being made to make them clear, and that effort was strong, I think you'd find the citizens would pitch in and pick up the difference between the slack of the actual plow getting there. I really can't think what that time would be, maybe, I don't know, three days?
Right. Oh, okay. So, but then people would, who have accessibility issues or get around in a wheelchair, would still have to stay in for those three days if it happened to be their street that was not plowed properly?
Perhaps have a first snowfall.
Right.
But I think it would be much improved after that.
Mm-hmm, okay. I wonder if everybody is so patient as you. I don't know.
Maybe not.
Right. Okay. You know, I was You know, I was talking to one of our staff people today about that problem as well. You know, we have road clearing, and then we have sidewalk clearing in certain areas around schools, et cetera. But what about the windrows for the walk, for the crosswalks? You know, the, sometimes, oftentimes, that gets missed. And apparently, we have 65,000 four-corner intersections in our city alone, which astounded me. And I'm just wondering, would that be an essential part of it in your mind, that we make sure that we also plow the curb cuts on those 65,000 corners?
Absolutely. That's got to be done. The curb cuts are a problem not only for myself, but for anybody walking. I happen to live in one of the, very close to one of those four-corner sections, and all four corners are terrible.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Really bad. So, yes, that's got to be a piece of the puzzle for sure.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez.
I don't have any questions because they've been asked already, but thank you, Sharon, for coming in and keeping this in, right in our vision and line of vision. I think it's very important that we continue to have these conversations. And as a member on GRAC, I hear it. I hear it when I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Benovich.
Thank you. Thanks, Sharon, for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us. As I think our staff could tell you, I often express frustration that I think, quite frankly, we need to do better. And if we're encouraging more people to walk, if we're encouraging more people to rely on transit, if we're wanting to make our community more accessible, whether it's for people, you know, such as yourself who use a wheelchair, or for, you know, young mothers walking, their kids with a stroller trying to get from place to place, this is something we need to do a better job. And when I say "we," the city in some cases, the region in other cases, because it's a responsibility that we share, both from a funding perspective and a service delivery perspective. And both parties need to be part of the solution. I was intrigued by one piece that you touched on, and it was the, this notion of door-to-door transit. And I'm wondering, and maybe this needs to be part of the analysis, is looking at, you know, the number of people in the community that have accessibility challenges, and, you know, should we look at a higher level of accessible transit service in the winter months as a possibility? And what's the cost analysis of that versus the cost analysis of cleaning? Because I would think that that would probably give you a better level of service, and maybe it's less. I don't know if it would be a lower cost or a higher cost. Is that something that, in your mind or in GRAC's mind, could be part of the solution?
I can say that I also serve on a committee with GRT, and they do provide winter approval for winter-only, with certain, you know, that, so that can happen. In terms of cost analysis, I wouldn't know that. But I think in the interim, you're only going to add cost to your transit system. I think it would be more excessive than taking over the sidewalks, to be honest.
Right, okay. But that's perhaps something that, you know, we can look at as part of this. And I guess the last, just so I don't need to take the microphone, I hear Chair, Mr. Chair, that Counselor Galway Seelock wants to ask for an issue paper with an update on this, and I'm glad that she's moving that, because I was going to be asking for that as well. I think we need an update that outlines, you know, why the delay from the province, when can we expect some answers, and sort of how are we gearing up as an organization for when those provincial answers comes to look at, to look at what the possible options are for us and for the region? Because it is something that we do need to deal with, I believe.
Certainly, and I will actually take that, I'll take that extra information from staff, and if you'll hold off on your issue paper request just until after the next delegation, because I know, because I spoke to her earlier today, it's on the same issues. I think we should just afford her the same ability to speak before we put that issue paper to staff. We have one final person with questions, Counselor Etherington.
Sharon, thanks for coming in. I don't really have a question, but I would encourage you, you obviously have not given up for years on this issue, don't give up now, because speaking as one councillor, I come full circle on this issue, especially lately. I've been getting a lot more calls and comments and emails from people who are willing, say they're willing, to pay up to a $50 increase, not $26, up to 50 bucks on their taxes to, in order to get the city more involved in clearing sidewalks. And I haven't had that before, so I think there's a different feeling out there, and I would certainly not only support this push for an issue paper, but I think we have to go down that road, and as the mayor says, we need the, need the help of other government levels, because you're talking about a pretty staggering cost, and that's what stopped us so far. But as I say, I see much more interest in, from people willing to support that move, so don't give up.
Thank you. I won't.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the questions. Thank you, Ms. Giles, coming in. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Up next, Ms. Jihan Sabah.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, City of Kitchener councillors, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. In this meeting, when council discusses budgets, projects, and upkeep of the city, all of them important and commendable endeavors and efforts we are very appreciative and grateful for. Sadly, in our zeal to save money, the city has neglected to address a grievous wrong that should never have existed in the first place. I'm talking about the arbitrary sentence of hard labor with no parole in sight imposed upon homeowners under threat of severe penalties to shovel, scrape, pack snow or ice on city-owned sidewalks, and the huge amounts resulting from what the plows dump at the entrance of our driveways, all in harsh, severe, freezing weather conditions. This cannot be called a normal civic duty by any standards. Such an injustice and wrong should not be allowed to stand on any excuse, including money, especially in a large, rich city such as Kitchener. This bylaw may have been necessary sometime in the past, but with the wide tax base we have today, and especially with the newer and much cheaper technology available for sidewalks, no removal, there is no excuse for allowing a grievous wrong to continue. Modern snow removal machines do the job easily and unbelievably high speeds. In exactly 10 minutes, one of those machines can finish the sidewalk going all around an average-sized crescent. That is one man on one machine, sparing dozens of homeowners a lot of trouble, discomfort, pain, inconvenience, and even illness, injury, or worse yet, a heart attack. The idea of telling a homeowner, if they can't do it themselves, they're on their own and have to work out an alternative, or pay others to have it done, or buy a machine to do it, or any of that, is just more injustice and an unfair burden on their shoulders and should be crossed out of any solution. The city and council very kindly work hard to afford better programs, more facilities, and more activities, especially for seniors, so why not add one more crucial service? That is to say, have the professionals do the job as it should be done. Those who go out to do this arduous work on behalf of the city risk life and limb or severe injuries for us every time they are out there, even though they did not voluntarily sign up for it. A forced, unpaid labor imposed indiscriminately upon the shoulders of innocent homeowners without their consent, regardless of their own body's abilities, the old and young, the frail and able-bodied, the sick and the well alike. The premise is deeply flawed from its roots. It is a blatant travesty, and though we worry about the pedestrians' right to walk on cleared sidewalks, that is not a homeowner's problem and should never have been. Human beings and justice should be primary elements of the discussions that go on among this venerable council that represents the people of this city. Until this matter is brought to a satisfactory conclusion, we cannot call ourselves a civilized community by any other measure. We may have very high-tech companies locating in our city. We may have the truly wonderful LRT. We can have all other kinds of perks and attractions, but we can never call ourselves civilized with that kind of travesty going on every winter. We are certainly grateful and thankful to the mayor, council, and city staff for making our city well worth being proud of, but sadly, that is marred by the inhumanity of an archaic, unjust bylaw which has no place in such a city. Canadian winters dictate that this be considered a high priority on city budget. I am sure that once you realize the extent of wrong involved, we will take it, you will take it upon yourselves to find the best solutions possible. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, and though there is so much more that can be said on this topic, I'm limited to five minutes, so please allow me to answer any questions now or later. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny, for your presentation. There are some questions. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you, Jihan, for coming in and making your presentation. We've had a couple of conversations about this. Is there a similar question that was asked of Sharon? Is there a timeframe in which you believe that the sidewalks could be cleared? Do you think it should be one day, three days?
I'm not a specialist on modern technology, but I am assuming that the development and process could be favorable for an efficient, how shall I put it, for accomplishing all of that in a reasonable time. I don't want to specify a time, but I'm thinking technology and advancements and modern science have provided quite a lot of options.
Okay. Do you see that it's important maybe to prioritize certain routes, for example, transit routes as, like we do with the snow plowing? Transit routes are a priority to be cleared, to main arterial roads to be cleared. Do you see that we should be doing that, maybe if we consider clearing the sidewalks, that we should prioritize how they're done?
Could I step backwards one second and maybe emphasize that initially buying into the idea that this has to be done, no questions asked, should be the first step, and then working out the details and the solutions comes next? If we're convinced that this is something we have to do, I'm sure we can further discuss how to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yenaski.
Yeah, thank you for coming in and making your presentation, and your concerns about removing the snow from the sidewalks, and the concerns that seniors and people with hardships have difficulty doing it. Would you be expecting the city also to do the driveways and the boulevards down to the, to the roads when the snowplow comes in and provides the dump? Or is that going to be totally the homeowner's responsibility?
No, absolutely not. The driveway is the homeowner's, but the plow blocks the driveways, and that is a big issue. Is that what you were asking?
Yes, I was. When the snowplow, then, I'm gathering what you're indicating, that if the snowplow comes through the, cleans the street, and leaves a pile of snow by the bottom of the driveway, then the city crews should come up and clean that up as well? Is that what you would like to see?
There are gadgets that attach to the plows that are being currently used in Toronto and other places that go with the plow and clear what they dump on the driveway initially. So, there is the technology that would do that.
So, that should be done as well as the sidewalks, both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. You know, there've been, it's not exactly necessarily something that, in previous discussions on this issue, that has, you know, it hasn't come to a point where this council has decided, yes, this must be done. You said that's the first step that we would have to take, that everybody would need to be convinced, and I don't think that it would ever hap, necessarily ever happen that everybody would agree, because there are different opinions on it. Now, I think everybody agrees that we want the sidewalks cleared by a certain time, but the question is, who does it, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So, what would be your response to people who talk about the idea that the activity of shoveling snow is something that builds stronger neighborhood connections, you know, people who go out there and do good deeds for each other's, for their neighbors, you know, and use their snow blower to help each other out? This would be, wouldn't this be lost if the city were to take over the, all the clearing?
Well, you're talking about somebody wanting to do that by choice, not being forced to do it.
Yes.
And not being penalized for not doing it. I might want to bungee jump, but it's my choice, okay? It's not that everybody should be doing it, or if somebody else is doing it, that I should do it.
Right.
Like, if neighbors have many other ways of socializing and getting together and whatever, but being forced as a homeowner to be doing this and having to face a penalty about it are two very unacceptable situations.
Okay. And then, but, so, and that's fine, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to understand what your perspective would be, you know, on those questions. So, but in the summertime, when the city bylaws require people to keep their lawns or their yards to a certain height, you cannot have your grass be a meter tall. So, is that, is that something that you feel is not a reasonable ask of the homeowner?
Are we talking about within the boundaries of the homeowner, or the grass that is after the sidewalk outside?
Sure. Let's talk about city property, the grass on the boulevard.
Well, there's an interesting situation here, where I am at the bottom of a crescent that actually slides downward, so when the snow melts, it brings a lot of the salt as well, and has been killing the tree that is on the outside city part. And I have been told many times that, don't touch it, this is ours, we are going to come and put a new tree, we're going to remove the old one, and we're going to put the new one. That happened several times. And I'm wondering, why don't we finally determine if that is yours, the city's?
Yes.
Why am I mowing the lawn for it? And if the sidewalk belongs to the city, why am I shoveling it?
Okay. Thanks for your perspective. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jihan. There are no further questions. Thank you, Kenny, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will now look Okay, I will now look to Councilor Galloway-Seelock to detail the issue paper.
I didn't write it out, so I hope that's okay, but I think it should be fairly clear, just that staff report back for final budget day with an issue paper on sidewalks, no clearing, just with a little bit of the history, because I know we had a report in the last five years or so with regards to that, the approximate cost per household. And I know that we're currently doing a review, so what is staff doing on this issue? And I know the mayor mentioned something about the delays with the province, really so it's just any information that you can provide with us for us to make this decision. And I would also want some consideration given to if we would actually be able to implement something like this for the 2018 winter, so come November, December, or if it really would end up at this point in time being a budget issue for the following year, the 2019 budget. And if there is, or what public engagement has been done to date, or what that could look like. I know it seems like a lot, but I think a lot of the work's done, and it's just kind of putting it all into a report. I don't want to, one of the reasons is that I don't want to glaze over this issue. We've heard about it pretty consistently for a number of years now, and even in the feedback that we got with the public input that came off of Engage, it was one of the strong themes that came out of there, and I certainly, in my years around this horseshoe, am starting to hear and see a lot more support for it, remembering that it would only be the sidewalk, and it's not taking care of, like, the boulevard windrows or driveways. So I think that it's something that we need to seriously consider, and so I think it's important for us to move towards an issue paper and seeing where and what we can do about this issue.
Okay, so as per past practice, we don't actually typically vote on issue papers unless staff identifies them as being particularly onerous or difficult to meet in terms of timing. So, Councilor Galloway-Seelock, I heard a bit of a history in what we've done, where we are now, an idea of cost per household, if possible, implementation timing, whether it's this year or next, or pardon me, yeah, this year or next, and if, what if any public engagement have we done or should we do? Okay. Ms. Fletcher?
Through you, Chair Davy. I can assure council that we've heard loud and clear from the community, we've heard loud and clear from many of our interest groups like Tri-Tag, like Max, like GRAC. We see this as a high priority as well. The issue paper that Councilor Galloway-Seelock has requested, we can put most of it together. I can tell you that we anticipate, the delay has been with the provincial maintenance standards. Staff now anticipates that those maintenance standards will be out towards the end of the first quarter in 2018. In anticipation and while we're waiting for the new maintenance standards, we are undergoing a comprehensive winter maintenance review, in which we are looking at sidewalks, windrows, and the other area that Ms. Guiles identified was heights of snowbanks, so we're looking at snow loading as well, we're quantifying the impacts of the ion operations as well. All of this input will be part of a final report to council, and we anticipate June as a timing for that for council. What I would be reluctant to do by next week is put a cost at this point, because we have not done the full and comprehensive review. We're looking at whether or not we can look for efficiencies, as well as putting costs in front of council. We anticipate we can put some options in front of council to consider by June. We would possibly be looking at some pilot projects so that we can test some things, see how they're working, look at some tweaks. So I'm happy to bring an issue paper back that gives a bit of the history and looks at the process that we're going through right now, but June would be our timeline to put comprehensive information in front of council.
Just on that, if I may, Mr. Chair, is when we did the review, I don't remember, five years ago, I don't remember the exact date, there was a cost, and that's where this $26 typically is coming from, so I think that that is a ballpark, but understanding that in June we'll probably have a more definitive figure that would be attached. So that's kind of understanding that you're not going to be able to give a firm, it's going to cost $26 a year, but that's what our historical data has shown us, but we're looking at efficiencies. I think that's the type of thing I think the report could have included.
So through the chair, the report was in November of 2016 that we brought, and we brought an order of magnitude number to council, and it was really based on mirroring the road maintenance, so not necessarily to bare pavement. So that's one of the things that we want to do as part of this comprehensive review. We gave an order of magnitude cost to council, and we want to verify that cost as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have two people in the queue on this. Councilor Schneider.
Thank you, Chair Davy. I'm wondering also if there might be the ability to do some comparative costing, if this could be contracted out, because I think a lot of the problem with the financials of it is that we have to purchase all this new equipment upfront, so I'm wondering if contracting this out might be possible and also a savings.
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the chair, that will be part of the options presented to council, is whether, not only the type of service provided, but whether it's contracted service or in-house.
Very good. And Councilor Marsh.
And just further to that issue paper, I wanted to ask about this problem between, we have road maintenance and we have sidewalk maintenance, but then in the crosswalks near school zones, I'm wondering if we could add that as a potential duty for the sidewalks no clearers to make sure the windrows are cleared. I know they do that, where the, they already do that where there are school crossing guards, but in the crosswalks where there are no crossing guards, it doesn't, it seems to be another area that's fallen through the cracks.
Okay. Ms. Fletcher? Oh, pardon me. Go ahead.
Through the chair, I have made note of that item.
Very good. Okay, yes, sorry, Mr. Haggy?
Sure, I was just going to chime in and say, so council can look for that, we'll try to email it out to council by the end of this week, so it's not just a walk-in on Monday, but don't expect it tomorrow, I guess, just to set expectations.
Yes, point taken, yes, I don't expect it that quickly. I would just, I'd just add quickly that echo of my fellow councillors' comments, that we realize that we need to do better in this area, and it's something that we're taking very seriously, and I look forward to seeing what staff comes back with for budget and even more so in June. Okay, moving along here, our next delegation is Mr. Marcus Strester.
I think we've all seen a comment.
Oh, sir, just give us one second, we'll raise the podium.
Absolutely. I can do the spinover. Seems to be a common thread this evening through most of these delegations about transportation, in active transportation and moving people around. I've sat on the City of Kitchener's Cycling and Trails Advisory Board for the past three-plus years, from member to vice-chair and now as chair. I'm here definitely today as an engaged citizen, not on behalf of the committee, I want to make that clear. I've been, I've seen a lot of passionate people come and go in our committee over the past three years. We have quite a bit of turnover, and it seems like we get a lot of people with great expectations at the beginning and quickly either see that we have struggles or the slow process of what we're doing, and we see turnover. I see equal frustration from staff as well as the committee, respect for, much respect for the great work that our staff is doing right now, they can do so much in this area with the small staff they do have. Frequently, it's just one person at the moment in the active transportation planning project management role, with co-op students helping fill some of the needs in that area, which is why I'm here today, to support the hiring of another full-time staff for this position. We've come a long way in the past few years, past many years, in cycling and trails, infrastructure in the City of Kitchener. Mostly, the questions we seem to be getting again and again, that get asked, is why aren't our paths and trails connected in any sort of meaningful way? Keeps coming up more and more. We try to go look at what we've done in the past, what we're doing in the future, and that seems to be a common thread always, is yes, we have great pieces here, we have great pieces there, we're doing great things here, we're doing great things there, but nothing is connected. With a new staff member, instead of the rotating co-op student, I feel that the co-op student at the moment is a bit of a drain on the solo staff that is there, that has to keep on retraining that staff, spending time away from what they could be doing, which is zone duties of promoting and implementing active transportation in the City of Kitchener. I'm a huge proponent of that, we do not need to reinvent the wheel in anything to do with what we're doing on this topic. There is beyond enough examples around Canada, around North America, and around the world that are showing great ideas of how to do this, active transportation in better ways, but even more importantly, getting results that are very impressive. Another role that's something to do with a full-time person could be going after as well, is that with the cap and trade program that's been implemented in Ontario, and now the Fed's doing a similar somewhat program, a lot of money's been talked about for cycling infrastructure across Canada or Ontario, maybe. And so one of the main roles that we're looking at and we're seeing, besides a great announcement that came recently with some great funding from the Province of Ontario, is that more of these grants are out there, and they'll be available going forward continuously due to this cap and trade program. So I think that another full-time position could be just used simply going after existing grants that are out there right now, which would be a boost onto our infrastructure here, it would really be kind of almost a cost offsetting. One of the major things that the new staff could help continue to push and the implication of is a minimum grid, which is something that we know that the City of Kitchener has been tweeting about recently with some of these funding. It's something that is constantly talked about, as well as separate and divided trails and lanes, proper signage and wayfinding, which is another major issue. It's just people coming from, especially, even people living here, but especially from outer town, trying to wait around, trying to find their way around our trails and network is quite confusing, as well as safe bike parking and transit connections. And hopefully, this all leads to, more importantly, a complete streets policy for active transportation in the City of Kitchener. Our streets repeatedly being talked about right now, and mobility and getting around and transportation, it's an inclusive issue that is for everybody in the city, it's not just for sporting, and we believe that our streets need and must be safe for all of our citizens, not just for people traveling by car. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Direct committee's attention to you, to page 0102. There is, within the budget, there's recommended three positions, and one of them, Mr. Jaz was referring to, on page 103, the Act of Transportation Planning Project Manager. Questions? Councilor Fernandez.
Thanks, Marcus, for coming in and putting your support behind the FTE. I was not originally supportive of this, but in hearing some of your comments and in conversations with staff, it sounds to me like there is an overabundance of work that just seems to fall off the table. Is that the sense that you're getting as well, through the cycling committee as well as, because you meet with staff to set agendas, is that, is that where you're hearing some of these concerns?
Yeah, I think, you know, as one who tries to get past obstacles and not worry about so much what's in front of us, of why we can't do something, it seems like that's one of the things, is I keep on hearing the same things, why are we doing this, or why can't we do this, why can't we do this, why can't we get these things connected? And it's that frustration, like I said, I think is making people leave our committee. I think that one of the things that I'm looking for is what obstacles are in the way of making us a greater system, making active transportation a major thing at part of City of Kitchener, and I think that, I think that there's a reason for hiring someone that could go after this to help with that, because yes, I think you're right, I think the solo person right now is wasting a lot of time kind of doing other things, that could be doing other things to be going after more of this, I guess is a roundabout kind of way.
Okay. Have you been hearing about the gaps that are between what our staff is able to do to increase our cycling infrastructure, and what the expectations of the Cycling Advisory Committee is, and what the communities wants and sees? Do you feel that a person who is dedicated to working on those missing pieces will help make that connectivity across this?
I do indeed, I think that's an extremely part, I got a little lost in my last answer there, but that's exactly the point, is that, you know, we need someone else to step up and to really, to take this to the next level, is staffing, is we need more staffing to be on this issue. It's an issue that's been constantly talked about, and it's something that definitely, more staff, more help for that staff to do their job properly is exactly what we're looking for, and most people are talking about this nonstop, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm going to be a little bit of a devil's advocate here for a second, because we're never going to be finished with cycling infrastructure, just like we're never finished with road infrastructure and such, but at some point in time, I would hope that it's just a situation where we maintain what we have. Where do we hold those full-time positions then? I mean, that may be a bigger question.
When the job's done, is that what you're saying? When we get to that, anywhere near that, we'll all come back in and say, I think it's time to pull that staff out of here. I think, I think we're so far from worrying about the complete project and what that looks like, I don't think we're anywhere near to worry about that. I think, I think one staff member is not even near enough at all to start this process of really showing the world, like, we talk about Commutech, you know, doing a livable city, this is, this is part of this, this is exactly part of this, this is, active transportation is a major part of a livable city. Connecting these trails and paths will make the city better, and make it a better place to live. This is important, this will be going forward for a long time, this is just the beginning.
Okay, thank you, that was probably more of a philosophical question, but thanks for your answer.
Thank you. Mayor Verbenich?
Thank you very much, and thanks, Marcus, for coming in and all of the work that you and the other committee members are doing on the advisory committee. You talked about a number of things, minimum grid, proper signage and wayfinding, bike parking, transit, but there were two that resonated with me in particular, and that was the whole issue of separated lanes and the importance of a complete streets policy. And I guess what I'm particularly curious about is, has the committee dealt with both those issues and taken a position on them? Because I happen to be a strong proponent of a complete streets policy, and it would be interesting to know that the committee's dealt with this and is supportive of it.
I think, you know, again, just speaking on my own behalf, as what I've noticed, this is, this is something that's talked about nonstop. It's almost every single project that gets brought to the table of what's coming down the pipe is said, first question is, is this separate? Is this, are we finally going to take the step? We don't technically really have any separate cycling infrastructure at this moment, so the first step is needed, like, we have to start that step. So I think anybody that's, is looking at this, it's, the separate bike lane is all about the comfort and safety of cycling. It's nothing to do with, you know, a faster corridor or something like that, it is what level do you feel safe taking a six-year-old child with you on a bike ride across the City of Kitchener? Where do you feel safe on that? Do you feel safe on a Cheryl Road down the center of King Street? Do you feel safe on a Cheryl Road on somewhere else? Where do you feel safe? So the degree of safety and the comfort and what'll take cycling to the next step in the City of Kitchener is separated lanes. That safety level is what it's all about. And as far as the other one there, the complete street policy, again, that is definitely something that is constantly kind of talked about, is to see cycling and trails enter another realm in the City of Kitchener, and not just, you know, recommendations, a wish list, you know, whatever have you. It would be nice to see more of a direct policy, so that when we do build new roads, which we aren't really building new roads anywhere in this core, so all we are doing is building new roads, you know, outside in residential neighborhoods at the moment, so it would be nice to see some sort of infill project, infill policy like to have for sidewalks, that all new streets that are being built in the City of Kitchener have some sort of component of active transportation and separated designated lanes for people getting around. This should be something that is in policy, not that we have to do when there's a project going on, and then now, hey, can we squeeze in a little cycling? Hey, can we squeeze in something different? It'd be nice to see this as a standard. Hey, can we squeeze in something different? It'd be nice to see this as a standard set immediately when, when any planning goes into these kind of things.
So one of the other things I was gonna ask is, has this advisory committee at any point connected with the regions committee, or considered coming to the region? Because I think it's probably safe to say the first streets, I think most people would want to look at separated line, lanes on, are probably regional roads, just because that's where the, the likely conflict between cyclists and vehicles are more likely to occur, more so than on residential streets, as an example. And, and so, has there been any dialogue between the two advisory committees on this?
Good, excellent points on, on both of them. On the first one, we are, we have, we are actually literally in, in the process, right now, as this actually our last agenda meeting was, agenda setting for our meeting, was trying to coordinate a gathering of minds between the region and the City of Waterloo, you know, to, to kind of come up with more of a, of a dedicated plan across that, or at least share and, and try to get more on the same page. This is, one of the things we're constantly trying to do is, 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 and we hear this a lot, is, is, yeah, what about that street, what about this street? And, yeah, sure, they are regional roads, but probably, again, going back to the obstacle thing, I, we, we try to make our mandate not to worry about that so much. Yes, they are a massive part of that, but let's try to do what the City of Kitchener can do, let's do what we can do. The region is gonna do what they're gonna do, and, you know, yes, working with them, of course, is important, but I, I'm just getting a little, we're getting a little fatigued about that question of, you know, well, that street, well, great, that isn't in our control. There's so many other streets that are in our control, and we, we can do so much more on it. And I believe the, the second part of that was.
Getting together with the.
No, that was the first part, so the second.
And, and the, no, I forgot the second part. We'll come back to it.
So, yeah, there was two parts there, kind of, and that was, the one was meeting with them, and then, oh, and then.
Actually going as a delegation potentially.
Oh, well, that would definitely be something, be, be joined together and then kind of coming up with that idea for doing something like that, would be definitely down the road for sure, absolutely.
Happy to work with you to help facilitate that.
Awesome, thank you very much.
And lastly, we have councillor Marsh.
Thank you, a lot of my questions were already asked, so I, I wanted to pick up where the mayor left off, just on the separated bike lanes question. Has the committee already identified on the map, through their cycling trails master plan, which specific streets would be ideal for separated bike lanes, and do you have criteria such as less driveways and that type of thing?
That's great points, great questions. Basically, the cycling master plan is getting an update this year, and so at the time before, that wasn't really part of it, or at least, you know, it was more a wish than whatever. I think the biggest thing with having more staff and having more, you know, eyes really on this topic in general period is that, is the minimum grid. It's, it's basically starting the other way. So right now, we've been doing kind of piecemeal, like I've been saying, and, and that's the whole strategy, is if you've got to do separate lanes, then we need to start with a minimum grid. That's the number one component of this whole thing, is let's, you know, make an idea of what we're gonna be doing as a minimum grid and start with that, and then in that minimum grid, we can look at more designation of, of, of separated sidewalk, separated lanes, things like that. So, no, there's not really anything with, like you're saying, with numbers and streets and things like that at, at the moment, no.
Okay, fair enough, I mean, it's a.
It's a, basically, like I said before, it's anything, at, at one, one, start with one, and we'd be, we'd be, let's start with that.
I would love that, you know.
Move from there.
I think, I think Waterloo's gonna beat us to the punch, though, they're gonna have the first one, but then we could maybe shoot to have the first one in Kitchener.
Minimum grid is still, you know, a, a major dream of any city, and I think that, you know, it's not, it's not, doesn't need to be a dream anymore. I think this is, this is a major part of city building, and it's a major part of getting around.
Absolutely, and in a community where we really are more car-centric than some of our other cities within Canada, I think it's, it's important that we, we provide the infrastructure to allow those who want to make that choice to feel safe doing so. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
There are no further questions, thank you kindly for your presentation, Mr. Jazner. And the final delegate we have this evening is Mr. Craig Robson.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Craig Robson, I'm here representing three landowners who someday hope to make use of the Middle Strasburg Trunk Sanitary Sewer. The region of Waterloo is, and those clients are, just for the record, the Schlegel-Cook-Madobe landowners, in the Bleems and Fisher-Holman area. And the region of Waterloo is looking to advance the much-needed intersection improvements at Fisher-Holman and Bleems Road, to begin the widening of Fisher-Holman to four lanes, and to implement the full culvert replacement at Fisher-Holman near Bleems, as mandated by the Ministry of Environment. Part of the required MSTSS work, a small amount of it, a very small amount, that's basically the piece that's going under Fisher-Holman and a couple of stubs to take it outside of the right-of-way, can only be done within a very narrow window because of environmental concerns between the months of July and September. And so you miss the window, you, you go next year, or the next year. And that's because of Ministry regulations that relate to the headwater area of the Strasburg Creek. The proposed Fisher-Holman widening and roundabout of Bleems is needed to remove an already significant traffic congestion. At peak times, traffic is frequently backed up from Bleems to the entrance of City's Williamsburg Cemetery, I'm sure you've probably heard more about that than I have, and I, I try to avoid it, I come in late. It's prudent and it makes sense that this small amount of MSTSS works that are proposed to be under the Fisher-Holman right-of-way should be done at the same time as the region's Fisher-Holman roadworks. In order to meet the ministry mandated July to September window for next year in the Strasburg Creek area, and not delay the Fisher-Holman roadworks, I'm advised the city design work for this has to start immediately and be in the hands of the region by July of this year. The region needs this design to then complete the region's design and to be able to go to tender in November of 2018. And I've been educated on how long it takes to make box culverts, and they have to go to tender in November of night, of 2018 to be able to be sure that they can make the window in July to September of 2019, because it's, apparently it's a pretty involved process. Our clients wish to work with city staff over the next few months to try to finalise a credit for services agreement that'll let them complete the financing of the Middle Strasburg Trunk Sanitary, but if we wait for that process to be finished, it'll be, before we start the design, it'll be too late to get the design done in order to make the time limits that we've been advised of that are very tight. The specifics of my ask today are to request the advancement of development charge funding from 2022 to 2018 for this design work, and for the construction of the small segment of the sanitary sewer that's under Fisher-Holman Road. Currently, the figures you have in front of you for the budget discussions include the advancement of funds for construction of a small, small piece of this sanitary sewer, not the piece that we're now talking about, but part of it, in the amount of $213,000. City Engineering has advised that an additional $680,000 in development charge funds are required for a total of $893,000 in 2018 to complete the design and the small piece of construction of the MSTSS under the right-of-way. So I'm, I'm asking the city to advance the DC funding of this design and limited MSTSS work in the amount of $893,000, so that the July/September 2019 construction window can be achieved. And our clients are prepared and willing to enter into a credit for service agreement that would also include a repayment of the additional monies that are being requested of $680,000 over above what was already in the budget request, as paying it back to the DC fund as part of that credit for services agreement. So it's really a matter of saying, we've got to get this design started, or we're not gonna make 2019, that's gonna interfere with a whole bunch of things, it's the ripple effect.
Pardon me, thank you very kindly for your presentation. Question, councillor Galley-Seelak.
Sorry, I'm not gonna be able to find it. I'm just trying to understand your numbers a little bit further.
Sure.
So I can't remember off the top.
If you want to just take one second to look what you're looking for, Mr. Haggy has a, wants to.
Perfect.
Something to add?
If you're looking for the project, I believe it's on page C169 of our capital package, and it roughly shows that there's $213,000 in 2008, and then about 5.5 million in each of 2022 and 2023. So the total project's just over $11 million, and so I think it's on page C169.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you're saying that there is currently $213,000 in this year, so we would need to add an additional 680 to get just the design work and to be able to pay for that piece underneath the Fisher-Holman Road?
Through the chair, yes, that is the, the number. There's an additional 680 to do the complete design and to do the additional sewer work under the Fisher-Holman Road and take it out, stub it out the other side.
Okay, that's all my questions, Mr. Chair, at the appropriate time. I'd like to ask for an issue paper on this matter.
Very good. Councillor Marsh, questions?
Um, no, that's.
No? Okay, there are no further questions, Mr. Robson, oh, sorry, a couple of people just queued in. Councillor Uneski.
I, I appreciate where you're headed on this, and I can understand what your request is. Ryan Haggy indicated the whole project is 11 million plus. Would the intent of going in 2022 still be the intent of, in terms of construction, or you want that advanced as well to another year, as opposed to just the design work?
At, at this point, the contemplation is, is that anything beyond this would have to be done, paid for by the development industry and pursuant to a credit for services agreement that allowed payback as building permits were sought and eventually when the monies were available in the fund. We're not asking for an advancement of the DC funds to do the work on the main sewer itself, no. That would have to be developer-funded.
Okay, that's, that's clear, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Fernandez?
It's actually a question of staff.
Question of staff, okay, no further questions, Mr. Robson, thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Fernandez, question of staff?
Yes. Through this issue paper, Ryan, would we be able to understand the, I, I thought our DC funds were actually in a deficit at this point. Are they not? Or near?
Pardon me, Mr. Haggy?
Through the chair, they are not right now. We're planned to essentially be break-even at 2019, so when council set the 2014 background study, one of the goals was to be break-even by the end of 2019. Right now, we're on pace to meet that. If this were to be advanced, and there was no credit refund agreement, the reserve would be in the hole by roughly the $680,000. If it's advanced and there is a credit refund agreement and the developer group essentially repays for that, we would be fine. So the risk is essentially that we advance this work, there is no credit refund agreement, either approved by council or agreed to by the developer group, and then we're out that difference.
Okay, can you include that in the issue paper as well?
Yep.
What the options would be and what, what the implications would be?
Sure.
Is that possible? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Galley-Seelak, do you have anything to add for the issue paper? Go ahead.
No, I just, there's, there's many reasons to do this, so I think it's important for us to get the issue paper, to see what the implications are with regards to this road, roadwork slash intersection. We, I'm just gonna say, because I'll, I'll argue it more on budget day, but we need to fix that intersection, and it's the region's job to fix the intersection, but it's in our best interest to do the work we need to do at the same time, and so doing this design work now would be really important. So I think it's really just about making sure that we have all the information in the issue paper that we need in order to make that decision on budget day, including some of the problems with that, that intersection would, would be key for me. Any comments, I guess, from the region, because we've done the, the EA for the Fisher-Holman Road, Road widening, and so that's all part of that work, so it's just including that to try and make sure that we don't also, through this, hold up the process for the region. And so I think it, it's critical that we get all the information we can with, within reason, within a week's time to make that decision.
So, Mr. Haggy, the question then, is this something that can be done that isn't reasonably or unreasonable or onerous?
Yeah, no, so this is reasonable. We've been speaking with the developers about this, this is not the first time we've heard about this. I've been working with Mr. Gross just in the last few days to, you know, start putting something together in anticipation of something coming, being requested here, so totally reasonable, and we'll send that out at the same time we send the other issue paper about sidewalks no clearing.
Very good. Councillor Marsh, I have you in the queue.
Yeah, I guess I will, I just want to just confirm, I'm assuming, but I shouldn't assume, I want to ask the developers that are requesting this, are they in queue at the, one of the highest levels for greenfield development? Like, so for the Kitchener Growth Management Plan, are they, they're not level B or C? No?
I believe they are, yes.
They're with, we're, they're within the realm of the next steps, okay, thanks.
Okay, very good. That concludes, unless there's anyone in the gallery that wanted to speak, I don't think there's anyone here that hasn't spoken already. Well, to those either left, thank you kindly for taking the time, bringing your input to us, we, we do value it, and we'll take into consideration on final budget day. Thank you and have a good evening.